This is the Municipal of Monrova Planning Commission, January 18th, 2023. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Mr. Pecusa. Ms. Krivda. Mr. Walker.
Here.
Ms. Montgomery.
Here.
Ms. Lawrence.
Here.
Mr. Masong.
Here.
Mr. Bertoni.
Here.
Mr. Walden.
Here.
Start with the minutes from last meeting. Has everybody read them? Any changes? Motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Yep. Old Business, 22-5-C Bowser Genesis. This item was tabled at the December 21st meeting and it's tabled this time too?
Yes, they're still working through some geotechnical engineering problems, so they have requested to be tabled. That would be 22-5-C and 22-6-C also, the first two items under Old Business.
New Business, 22-7-SUB. Headfirst consolidation. Applicant is requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval to consolidate lot 642-E-315 and lot 642-E-335 into one primary lot with a total acreage of 8.519. The properties are located at 575 Thomas Street in the R2 One Family Residential Zoning District.
Can we get the ceiling camera to pick us up? Okay, so I'm going to do the presentation tonight. The surveyor had a medical emergency and so I told him I would fill in for him. It's a very simple two-lot subdivision. Resident purchased this inner lot where there's an existing house and the surrounding property was owned by the same people, so he bought both properties at the same time. And he just wants to have this inner property line eliminated through the consolidation process, so it's just going to become one lot. Very simple two-lot consolidation.
Sure.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I will motion to approve.
Okay. Vote, ayes?
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? No? No be opposed? Pass.
Next item is 23-1-St Gateway School District. Applicant is requesting site plan approval to construct a hard surface for the school band to practice on. Sidewalks and above ground stormwater management pond are to be constructed as part of the project and a practice surface shall be a green design using permeable pavement. The property is located at 9,000 Gateway Campus Boulevard and known as tax parcel ID 857-D309 in the R2 One Family Residential Zoning District. And I think we have representatives for the applicant here.
Sign in?
Yes.
State your name, please.
My name is Kristi Mitchell. I'm a registered landscape architect. This is John Shaper. We're from JT Sauer and Associates. We're here on the behalf of Gateway School District. I would like to present you with the site plan and go over a few things. I want to make sure that, to kind of go over the existing conditions. I know that it was shown up there. The current conditions, there is a natural grass ball field. As you can see here, that the Gateway Campus Boulevard stretches from the north to the west of the site. Over here. And then here is the proposed. Currently, the band is actually practicing on a parking lot and they would like, the school district would like to designate an actual paved area for them. So we're looking at this site to basically depict football field lines on a paved area for the band. There is an access drive that comes from below the area. That would be for any kind of equipment that they would need for the day. The band would use it during school and after school hours. You can see here that there is a little bit different shade of green here. That would be the storm pond that is, be able to handle all the stormwater management for the site. Currently, we are working on the updates since the municipal engineer has looked at it. We're updating our drawings. We also have an access for interior circulation in order for the band members to get down to the field. And then...
Is that angled because there's a hillside there?
Yes, and that's to get the right grade in order to get down to meet ADA. And then per the municipal zoning officer, we have added in a walk that goes from all along Gateway Campus Boulevard. Our client has requested that we would be able to phase that part of the project due to the size of it. Is there any questions?
When you ask for a phasing, what kind of criteria are they...
I think that they're open for some suggestions, but hoping that we could put it in in sections over a course of a few years.
Which part, just the sidewalk?
Just the sidewalk that wraps around Gateway Campus Boulevard.
It would certainly make sense to do it now while you have all the equipment there. I mean, trying to do it later on, remobilizing equipment to put that in would...
But it's on the edge too, and it has access to the road from all areas. It's not that, you know, the field where it actually is down here is a lot lower, which I can totally understand.
I think one thing the school was, did bring up is that they can still use, you know, the walkway that would be built at that time to still get over to this area to kind of take the kids off the road.
It's not so much the marching band kids. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic between the apartments in the school.
Right.
There's a lot of people that walk on Gateway Campus Boulevard. And realistically, that sidewalk probably should have been installed decades ago when the campus was built. So I don't know, council's the one that will make the decision on the phasing, granting of the phasing, but it should probably all be done at once.
I agree.
Yeah.
Why were they requesting the phasing? Cost?
Cost.
I think they had a allotted budget and then this was kind of something they didn't have planned, and I think that's where the phasing came into play financially, I guess.
And that can certainly be explored with council. You'll get a chance to make that presentation to council next month as well, so maybe have, you know, a time schedule.
Sure.
Why they're asking for it, the price, the cost of it, something like that to present to council. Other than that, I would say it's a nice project. The marching band will definitely appreciate it. And it's nice that they're using permeable pavement.
Absolutely.
It'll be nice to, because we don't really have a lot of that in Monrova, it'll be nice to see how that works.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Going to make a motion?
We have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
We'll see you at council next month.
Thank you.
City zoning ordinance work session. Update regarding revisions to the zoning ordinance. This was, this item was tabled at the December 21st, 22 Planning Commission meeting. We're looking to untable it?
Yeah, untable it first and then we can discuss it. So just make a motion to untable this item.
Make a motion to untable?
Sure.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
On table.
So...
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
You guys are free to go. You don't have to stay here for this. So last month, we talked about the new zoning ordinance coming up and there were some issues raised from some residents and the key issue was oil and gas. And we have a section in there, it's pretty comprehensive on oil and gas. I did add a section for injection wells, but council still has not released the draft to the public. They want to have their public meeting first before they will release that draft. So I can go over some of the, some of the changes that we've made in the zoning ordinance. Nothing's really changed from last month, but I would recommend it be recommended for approval to go to council so that council will release the draft and then the members and audience and residents can get a look at it. So some of the big, big items that have changed, we've added mixed-use sections in there so that people that have retail and commercial properties along 2248, Route 286, it gives them the opportunity to rent spaces for apartments. So it will, it will sort of mimic like downtown or some like Squirrel Hill areas where they have businesses on the first floor, maybe apartment above.
Okay.
So we added some of that in there. We added a medical overlay district and this is primarily around Forbes Hospital, AHN and UPMC. It kind of goes down the corridors of 22 and 48 so that if they want to expand medical office buildings or create a larger campus atmosphere, they don't have to fight with the zoning as hard. There's still a lot of restrictions in there, but it makes it a little bit more developer-friendly for the hospitals. There's a floodplain section in here that's been significantly updated. We used Pennsylvania League, Pennsylvania Municipal League helped me rewrite our zoning section and it follows PMA and FEMA regulations, so that section is pretty new and it's changed quite a bit. But we're trying to keep people from building in the floodplains, not that we have a lot of floodplains, but two years ago, we had that big flood in July and Abres Creek really got hit pretty hard. So fortunately, you know, we don't have a lot of development in the floodplain, but we're trying to keep people from any future development in the floodplain. We've added some, some sections in, in there with some design criteria for chickens. We've been getting a lot of requests for chickens, so we put some criteria in there. We've had chickens running down Monrova Boulevard, you know, we're trying to keep that from happening. Banquet halls, we've, we've had a couple of empty buildings that have been turned into banquet halls and our biggest problem with those is parking usually. A lot of the businesses that are no longer there were for office space and there was a very specific number of cars, but for a banquet, you know, you never know how many occupants you're going to have, so we put some regulations in there for banquet halls. We have a section for brewery, breweries. We've had, you know, some startup companies, you know, it starts out as a little hobby and it kind of grows, so we put some criteria in there for people that want to have a brewery. Distribution centers, you know, the big Amazon that almost happened in Churchill kind of got our attention, so we put some, some criteria in there for distribution centers. Medical marijuana, we've, we've got three dispensaries now. I can only imagine that's going to increase, so we put some criteria in there for those as well, you know, distance between stores, what they can and can't be located near outdoor dining, you know, we saw a boom in that with COVID, so we have some more criteria for people that want to turn to restaurants and have more seating outside. Shipping containers, we've gotten an influx of those as well. People want to get, you know, pods or, you know, just a metal container put in their yard.
Right.
Right now, we don't really have any, any criteria that regulates that, so we, we have some, we're going to cover some of that now. And then oil and gas, there's been significant changes to that. There was a proposed ordinance back in like 2018. I pretty much took that ordinance and just incorporated it into the zoning ordinance. It has 1,200-foot setback requirements, which is pretty significant. And I have a, I'll just take this up to the camera real quick. So this is an enlargement of a section of our zoning map. Give you guys a section to zoom in on that a little bit? Maybe? Hello? Okay. So this is, this is our largest M2 industrial area. This is the Sheets at the bottom of 48. This is McDane's Driving Range. This is the Speedway. And this is the big rail yard below Pit Karen. That's actually Monrova property. A lot of people don't realize that. This circle represents a circle that has a 1,200-foot radius, so it's 2,400 feet across, which is essentially a half mile. So currently, our, our setback is 1,200 feet in the proposed ordinance, so you can see that it already doesn't fit in the two M2 districts. So I think that's about as big as we can get the setback without getting ourselves into trouble. So this is just an illustration to give, to give the residents an idea of how big a 1,200-foot setback is. You know, if this is McDane's Driving Range, you know, it's twice the size of McDane's Driving Range. So that's just a little visual to give you an idea of how big a 1,200-foot setback is. And this is the proposed zoning map that encompasses all of the things that I just mentioned that we made revisions to. The red areas are, are commercial retail districts. This is 22. This is the Parkway. 76 is in here, the Turnpike, Route 286. So the red areas are the commercial retail center. This, this purple area is the blue area that I just showed you where McDane's, McDane's Driving Range, Sheets and the Speedway are. This is the landfill area. All the green areas are conservancy areas. That's mostly steep slopes and parks, not really conducive to development. And then the, the medical overlay district, you know, that's, that's around Forbes Hospital and UPMC. And that's, it's hard to see on there, but it's, it's this striped area that is the overlay district, which will just allow the hospitals to expand if they wanted to. So that's pretty much the, the revisions to the zoning ordinance. If you have any questions, I can answer them.
Pretty straightforward.
Are the hospitals looking at expanding possibly?
Always.
Always?
You know, UPMC just built that beautiful building. They added on a whole nother addition and they're already out of space. I mean, they're already looking to make it bigger. Forbes, you know, they've done a tremendous amount of work in the last couple of years over there.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't expect them...
Cancer Center is beautiful.
Yeah, it's really nice. But Monrova's fortunate that we have, you know, two premier hospitals, so, you know, we like them, they like us, we're trying to work together.
Sure.
Does the medical overlay include the former North American Martyrs?
Yes. Yeah, the North American Martyrs, I believe, is right here. I think it's this, this area. So that's pretty much it. Anybody has any questions, feel free to ask me, shoot me an email. And then I think there's some residents that would like to speak to this.
Okay.
Thanks, Paul.
Do I call them?
Yeah, I'm done, so you can just ask for any, any audience members.
Any audience members?
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Happy new year.
Happy new also.
I'm Lois Drumhiller. Live in Monrova and thank you, Mr. Walden, for leaving the proposed zoning map on the table. I was wondering whether or not the council meeting, which would have been last Tuesday, was able to be viewed as a replay or on YouTube by the commission here. Did anybody follow that? Because when you had the December meeting here and I spoke, I followed it up by attending the council meeting. So has anyone seen that meeting?
No.
I have not.
Okay. I didn't know how repetitive to get, but I, I did speak in front of council because of the decision that was made here in tabling this ordinance, which I am still asking the commission to reconsider tabling. There, there are reasons, but I have questions before that. The changes that Mr. Walden was introducing to the viewers and the audience, and I assume the commission, on those things that were adding things to oil and gas operations such as the injection well. Can the commission identify where those are going to be on the use table? I don't see the use table up here. I don't know whether you can get the use table in a large form to look at it, but it's, it's kind of hard to look at the proposed zoning map without the use table. I can point to things that...
Well, I can tell you this, the, the injection wells falls under the oil and gas, so it would be the same districts.
So as I remember it, Mr. Walden, you have, as you go down alphabetically on that use table, compressor station was part of oil and gas operations. Compressor station on the use table is a conditional use in M2, correct? That's the industrial zone, M2. And, and the reason I think that this is important to know is that, to know where this goes on is as important to know that how it can go on. For instance, the setback of 1,200 feet, I'm pretty sure that was discussed in workshop that was to make it appear that we're not being exclusive. If you're going to have to make room, as we have to, for oil and gas operations, you want to have it in an area that has the ability to have a setback that is better than the state's setback of 500 feet. Would you agree? Because that's not a very large setback. So I, I sense that this 1,200 feet was something that was, did you discuss that in your work, in your workshops on the ordinance?
We did briefly.
Okay, so the commission took part in that. The M2 district, I would imagine, can fit a compressor station there and there is no question as to it going into M2. The oil and gas operations that I saw on the use table for everything else that fell underneath oil and gas operation, which would be probably the injection wells, I'm not sure. I haven't really heard where those injection wells would be, but the oil and gas operations on this use table and on this map are in the area that, if they could use the eye in the sky here down on this zoning map, this, this would be in the area that's I'm outlining here, which is our landfill. And to, to one side of it is Pit Karen, right?
Correct.
And to the little bit of south of it is the Melon Plan, which you have Thomas Street going around there and all the, all the Melon Plan we're all familiar with. And so that area there, I think, is probably the reason why, even though it is deemed to be a LF for landfill, that, that was where you had a conditional use for oil and gas operations. There's just nothing that's big enough to encompass that. So I have a question. Where did the thought for making the landfill revert to being a conditional use for oil and gas? Where, who came up with that? Because prior to this in 2018, all oil and gas was in M2. And we know the story about M2 because it was pointed out with the radius of how, how difficult that would make to have a proper setback. But who came up with the idea of the landfill having the, you know, the, the district that oil and gas operations could go in? Was that, was that this commission?
No. I don't, I don't remember where that came from. I don't know if it was on a previous use chart that I used. You know, I, I inherited a draft of this document when I first started working here and I don't remember if it was labeled as a conditional use there and I just carried it over inadvertently. I mean, nobody specifically said, "Mr. Walden put that in that district." That did not happen. I don't, I'm, I can't tell you where that came from.
So, so the landfill is still LF landfill. It always has been landfill.
Well, currently, it's S1 Special Conservancy.
Special Conservancy. But I, the, the ordinance that you mentioned from 2018 that was pulled, that they, that council never voted on, actually, I think, was proposing that the landfill be changed to S, what was it, Special Conservancy?
S1.
S1. And that also, in that ordinance, where oil and gas operations would, would, would take place. I'm pretty sure that's where that came from. And who penned that ordinance? Where did that ordinance come from?
I'm not sure. That, I started here in 2017. That ordinance came about just as I was starting here.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know who authored that, where that came from.
I, I have good memory of going back a ways and certainly in 2018, when we came in front of then council to discuss the, the concern over oil and gas operations being allowed in every zoning district, and they wisely changed that and passed a motion to move specifically oil and gas just to the M2 zoning district. That was within weeks of this ordinance coming to council for the actual wording, for the actual ordinance on, on oil and gas. And that's when that changed. So my memory tells me that that was Mr. Ratcher who had penned the, the ordinance.
Could be.
And because we talked in front of council and, and as I was describing, Mr. Ratcher's experience goes back with Apex Energy and all of the many oil wells that were unconventional fracking wells. So he had good knowledge of what would normally appear in that ordinance. And when we saw that ordinance, I have to ask you the same thing. Have you had a chance to read the ordinance that you've added in? Because it sounds like it's the same ordinance as was penned in. Has the commission had a chance to read through that ordinance for oil and gas? Not the one that I can't see that, that, that is not shared with the public, but the one that I think was from 2018.
I believe it's the same, same wording and I just incorporated that into the proposed zoning ordinance. But to speak to your point about having it in all the districts, we ran into something similar with timbering. We tried to, to limit timbering and there was an organization in Monrova that sued us because we were trying, we were being too hard on them where they wanted to timber. They took it to the Attorney General and the Attorney General made us put timbering in every zoning district. So we run the risk of the same thing happening with oil and gas. If we get too restrictive, somebody could sue us and the Attorney General can say, "Fine, put it in every district."
Yeah, and it was the actual, our new governor who had a, what's the proper term?
Grand jury.
Grand jury, thank you. Who had a grand jury and last year came out with recommendations that this is strictly an industrial operation. I even asked at the end of the council meeting, and we were not rolling the cameras, it was after they gavelled down. And I approached the mayor and he was standing next to the municipal manager and I said, "Have, have there been any decisions on council's part to meet or discuss or have a pow-wow of some nature with the planning commission?" And at the time, I think the manager... And, uh, at the time, uh, I think the manager said, "Well, that, that, uh, yeah, I suppose we can consider that later on." And then the mayor said, "Well, we would have to advertise that, uh, as a public." And I agree, you would have to advertise such a, uh, such a, such a meeting. Are, are any of the planning commission aware that there's going to be dialogue between council and, and the commission on, on this, uh, this ordinance? And, and the fact that we, we still have something labeled S Conservancy, green space, and we have conditional use of oil and gas? And I'm going to ask you to go back over to the eye in the sky. All of this green space here and the landfill, all of this green space, all where your parks are, all where, uh, the common areas between neighborhoods, all of where wildlife rooms, and every, and every seven wards, you know, more so than, in some than others, that is open underneath the proposed rules for conditional, uh, use for oil and gas.
But none of those areas will meet the setback requirements?
Why have them, why have them, uh, conditional use? Why not decide what's going to be, uh, industrial use? For instance, if you thought, and it looks very logical, that the landfill was the only thing fit for industrial use, was there no discussion on changing that to M2? And I'm sure people in Mellon Plan won't be happy to hear me mention that, but, I mean, it begs that question. I, if you need to keep it in an industrial zone, and this is what the state is recommending, then it's not so much that, "Well, we'll make it conditional, but you know, really, we can't meet setbacks." Well, what if somebody later on changes the setbacks and decides that they're going to pass something in at the local level so that the setback is 500 feet?
Well, somebody's going to do that, they could change the zoning districts just as easy.
So, so as, as, you know, an honest, uh, you know, uh, adherence to what's an industrial process, why wouldn't that have been considered? It sounds like we don't really know where these suggestions came from, whether or not that the landfill was going to be made as a, uh, M2 for an industry.
There really hasn't been any, any discussion about that, but it could certainly happen. I mean, it, the LF landfill district is the only district, that's the only spot for it. So, I mean, and it's adjacent to an M2 district, so, I mean, it's-
Yeah.
It could very easily become an M2 district.
So, so this is one of the reasons why I'm asking to please extend your tabling of this, because I'm speaking here because I peeked over this gentleman's shoulder and I saw the, the use tables. No one in this municipality who has the right to understand what's going on with the changing of these districts has had a chance to see these things. Unless they're seeing it on a playback and then they can zoom in on YouTube and maybe read this, there's no way that the public is able to look at the map, the use table, certainly the, the language, and now new language, because you've added in the 2018 ordinance for oil and gas. And, and how can we weigh in and know what's going on unless we see these things? My answers were not answered. I made a, a specific point to council, to the mayor, to please let us know when we will be able to look at the draft documents. And they skirted around it very carefully. I just replayed that meeting back to make sure I didn't miss something. That was, there was nothing that, that said, "Oh, well, Lois, you know, w- we're going to give you, uh, four weeks, and you can go to the public library and it will be available by that time, it'll still be a draft." So, there's nothing different than it being a draft now to when it is a draft before council, so that the public has access to this. It, it doesn't make sense. And that's the reason why I pleaded with you, and I'm, and I'm pleading with you again to, to just extend this as a table, because I would, I really tried to be honest about getting an answer, and I didn't get an answer.
Well, I believe at the council meeting, if they didn't say it specifically, they sort of alluded-
Yeah.
-that they're not going to release the draft until they have their public hearing.
Okay.
So, I recommend that this, this go to council so that the draft can be released.
But when, and, and, and that's still the question mark. When is that? How much time? Do we get to look at that? Like, I'd be able to look at this now, or I'd be able to look at the language?
I, I believe it's going to be on council's agenda for at least two months. So, that's going to be four meetings. If it goes to three months, that'll be six meetings, and that'll give you at least two months to review the document.
To, to actually physically lay eyes on, touch, turn the page?
Sure, yeah.
See it at the library?
Yeah.
Is that your understanding?
Yeah, I believe we're going to put a copy on the website. I mean, we could put a hard copy, or a couple of hard copies at the library. I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that.
And that's what I was asking for, you know, last month.
And, and, and I believe, and I believe council's not going to do that until it gets in front of council. If it stays at planning commission, I don't think they're going to release it.
Okay, well, um, all right. In closing, and I thank you for your indulgence, because I'm, I know I'm way over five minutes here. Uh, but, uh, it, it, it used to be, and maybe will in the future, be a planning function that you yourselves work on this. And I'm, I'm, uh, if I had a chance to ask, uh, the gentlemen who were here from Strategic Solutions, I would have said, "Did this come from you?" Uh, because I'm assuming it did.
Did, did, what part? I can tell you if it came from them or not.
The decisions to change the use table where-
They did not make that decision, no.
And, and it sort of happened, but nobody knows who, who, uh, directed that.
I mean, if, if you really want to know, I can look back-
Yes.
-to my first draft and see-
Yes.
-where it was.
Yes, I would really like to know that. Thank you. And, um, thank you again, I think that's all. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Okay, my name is David Minz, longtime Monroeville resident, and, um, I'll also be referring to the, to the map here.
Good day.
Um, I, I just wanted to add a few more points. Mrs. Drumheller was pretty comprehensive there. Um, I, just to follow up on a few of the ideas, uh, and, and points is that, uh, one, I'm trying to remember them. One is the, uh, the idea of the public hearing, and I understand the, the idea of like, council doesn't want to release the information until it's, uh, forwarded to them essentially for the public hearing. But interestingly, I also spoke last month at this-
You did?
-commission and at the council, most recent council meeting, myself. Um, as I remember correctly, um, the reason I spoke at the, uh, Planning Commission last month was because there was a legal advertisement that, that, that meeting in December was a public hearing. That's the way it was written in the newspaper, uh, posting, it was a, a public hearing. So, that was my confusion last month, when actually I raised my hand several times, and, you know, I'm, I've come to a lot of meetings and I understand the procedure, but the reason I was raising my hand at the last meeting while Strategic Solutions was presenting was, um, it just felt like if this was a public hearing, I wanted to be able to have a copy so I could follow along while they were talking about things, since it was called a public hearing. So, it's just interesting to hear that, um, we, you know, it won't be made to the pub, uh, made public till there is a public hearing for council, although last month this was advertised as a public hearing, uh, at the planning commission, so-
I don't know that it was called a public hearing. There's a big difference between a public meeting and a public hearing. And I don't think it was a public hearing.
Does anybody have a copy of the, it was, it was actually emailed to us, actually, I have to look at my email, but it was emailed to us by another, uh, citizen who spotted it in the newspaper and then emailed copies to us, and that's why we came last month. Um, I'd have to go through my email now to see how it was listed, but I, I thought it was public hearing or was it public meeting?
It used Monroeville's.
If it, is public meeting different than public hearing?
Public hearing is, is like a formal-
Right, right.
-hearing. We, uh, we keep minutes and, uh, transcripts, people get sworn in. Uh, it's a public meeting, this is a public meeting.
Right, 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 right. I think it was from Jersey, and, okay. So, ma- maybe we'll find that, but, okay, so that was just one quick point. Um, one of my other points is just like the overall thing that I don't need to, but I, just for the public, not for, for the commission so much, because you guys are the commission, you know this, but, uh, for the public's sake, the idea of zoning, um, obviously, probably one of the number one, if not the number one rule of zoning, is the appropriate use in an appropriate zone. Um, and so that's why, when we did speak to, uh, the previous council, not the current one, but, uh, it, which is mostly different than it is today, but, um, and, and when, when the oil and gas development was allowed in all the zones, um, it was decided that that was not appropriate use in appropriate zone, you know, idea, so that they did restrict it to M2, as it is a very industrial process, the, the hydraulic fracturing, so that's why they put it there. Um, and so it, it seems to still be, uh, consistent, um, especially when, as, as was referenced, you know, talking about the 1,200-foot setback. Um, what I said to the council last month, since you guys didn't, uh, weren't at the council meeting, uh, I'll just mention real quick that I, that I mentioned that the 1,200-foot setback, while on the surface, obviously seems better than a 500-foot setback, right? I mean, it's, it's bigger, it gives more protection, right? Um, but if you look at scientific studies, if, if we're going to change the setback, I, I want it to be based on, um, actual science or, or some legal studies. So, I can tell you the University of Maryland, this has been now, uh, used across the country in different places, recommended at least a 2,000-foot setback based on studies to protect people and their health. Um, and so scientifically, it should be at least 2,000 feet, and, and the, uh, current governor, as of today, I think it was, or yesterday, um, when he was, uh, Attorney General, um, held a, uh, grand jury hearing about the subject of, of hydraulic fracturing and protecting the public. And the number one recommendation, and I have articles on that, that's easy to look up, the number one recommendation from the grand jury came out is that the setbacks in Pennsylvania should be 2,500 feet minimum. Um, so there's a lot of information out there, and you can look that up, I mean, this was done by our now-current governor, um, that would lead me to ask, not only as we were asking where the 1,200 feet came from, but why the number 1,200 feet? I, I, I've not read any scientific studies that said 1,200 feet was adequate. The grand jury certainly made it their recommend, number one recommendation to make it more than twice as much as 1,200 feet. So, once again, the 1,200 feet, um, and just so that everybody understands what Mrs. Drumheller was saying, um, if it does make it exclusionary to our M2, um, and to make it available as a conditional use in not only LF landfill, but, um, S Conservancy, I don't, I don't know for a fact. I mean, I'd have to see, you, you mentioned, and I hope this is true, but is, is there any S Conservancy in Monroeville that if it does get stuck on this 1,200 feet rather than the 2,000 or 2,500, that could take, as you said, and which we haven't seen yet, but you, you mentioned that you added injection wells, which needs to be in our zoning ordinance, obviously, but, um, could an injection well be put in one of these?
I also have that as 1,200 feet.
Okay, so that's 1,200 feet. Does that fit in even the largest of the S Conservancy areas of Monroeville?
I mean, if you look at the, uh, the, the M2 area down by the rail yards, that's, that's the, that's the widest M2-
Hmm.
...and it doesn't fit in there. I don't, I don't believe there's any S Conservancy areas that are that wide on that map.
I mean, I'm, I, I guess, here, here we go. Uh, if you can show the map, I'm just showing, looking at some of the larger ones, like around the landfill or Monroeville Park area, um, west. Uh, some of them, as Mrs. Drumheller was pointing out, are, are fairly large, and I can't tell from looking at this map. You know, like, I can't tell what's, I don't have the information to say if, if an injection well could go right here, or right here, or right here. Um, of course, these S Conservancies, just as was said already, are the areas of our parks, the areas between neighborhoods, the areas next to schools. Um, and our neighbor right now, Plum, is in, in, involved right now in a lawsuit, an appeal about the injection well. There's already one in Plum, and a second one is being, um, it's being proposed and trying, they're trying to put it in, and Plum is fighting it. So, I just want to get us ahead of the game and make sure we weren't, aren't allowing these injection wells in Monroeville at all, at least-
Do we know what Plum's setback is?
We know what Plum's current setback is. What happened is the first injection well in Plum went in before, this is why I say about us getting ahead of the game, which is good that we're doing this zoning ordinance, is I think the first one went in before they had rules about it, and now the second one in, second, the proposal for the second one is happening after Plum made rules, and that's why it all went to court. I was witnessing some of this in court this summer, and there's an appeal right now by the Plum Council to, uh, the fact that the first hearing that I went to in court this summer is allowing the second injection well, but Plum Council is now appealing that. So, they're involved in this. Um, so I, so if you understand what I'm saying, is like the 1,200 feet, it, it's important to know where it came from, but like, why that number is, I can say, as, as a citizen, it's kind of seems like, was that number, where did it come from? Was it picked because, well, it will fit in the landfill, even though it doesn't fit in M2, um, and, you know, is the landfill in an appropriate zone for an appropriate use? I'm, I don't know, it's not M2 industrial, we can change names, I don't know if that's just all semantics, but yet, if you follow me, is, that the 1,200 feet still seems to be a mystery?
I have Plum's ordinance here.
Okay, great.
They only require 500 feet for an injection well.
Okay, is that their-
Which is like the standard municipal-
That's what Monroeville is as we speak today, on January, that's what we are today, 500 feet. We, we have the state law, uh, rule, which is 500 feet as we speak today, right?
Correct, correct. The proposed ordinance is 1,200.
Right, the pro, proposed is 1,200, which is obviously better, but, as I said, not based on anything, and I've, I'm heavily involved with this, as you could probably guess.
Well, do you know where the, the state got 500 feet from?
I think that was just an arbitrary, you know, why 500, you know, what's scientific about 500? I don't think that was very protective, I think it's one of those, yeah, you know, it's one of those, "Let's make it 500 feet," you know, kind of thing. Whereas, you can look up the University of Maryland studies if you're interested.
But, and back to your point, though-
Yeah.
...of being 2,500 feet, that sounds like it would be a state change to, to, to the municipal code.
It would be, hopefully, if the grand jury recommendation is enacted by the state legislature.
Right.
Right, which it hasn't been yet.
Right.
But it doesn't mean that, you know, it's, they had, must have had their good reasons, and we could go back, you could probably find out why the grand jury made that recommendation.
What you stated earlier, though, sounds accurate, that, that you would surmise that in order to not be exclusionary, the only space this is really fit is in the landfill.
Well, that, that's what appears. Once again, I don't have, I, I don't know for sure until we get like an exact, I mean, I can't look at this with my eyeballs and say that, that an injection well couldn't go, like, right in these green S Conservancies around the landfill. We're all just kind of saying, "Well, it doesn't look like it."
You had the-
But that's pretty important to know, right, before we would approve.
It, it doesn't show.
There is-
Yeah, like this, like these areas look pretty large, not that much smaller than the landfill, so I, I don't know if that circle you made, which would be 1,200 feet on either side, making a diameter of 2,400 feet essentially from any, you know, protected structures, would fit right there, or right here, or right here, or, or somewhere near the park, I don't know. But, um, I just want to make sure that our community is protected. And I've seen this happen, I'm seeing it happen in Penn Township, they're fighting it, and Plum. In Murraysville tonight, there's a meeting about a, a proposed well pad in Murraysville right now. So, it's happening all around us, so we, we need to really know what we're doing, and I, I appreciate your time listening, and, um, and, uh, yeah, I look forward to, to being able to really know the facts rather than just kind of, like, surmising or figuring, you know what I mean? This is really important to a lot of people's lives, so we really have to know exactly what's going to happen with, with this industry, which is relentless, I can, I can tell you. I mean, I know they're going to keep on trying, so, um, it's not for the benefit of the health of the people of Monroeville, so, well, thank you for listening.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Um- Okay, just to follow up, we did find out, so it was, it was the, the, the planning commission last month was advertised as a public meeting, which I guess I, is different technically than a public hearing.
Big difference.